But this progress is threatened as the Trump administration rolls back on clean energy standards. In California, for example, the White House wants to reduce fuel economy standards for cars.
And that's why frankly, I'm so angry about what's going on in Washington DC. Look, Scott Pruitt has turned the EPA into the Environmental Polluters Association. It's just morally reprehensible.
California and other states are suing the Trump administration for ending climate rules enacted by President Obama. While that fight continues, the panel wonders how to get more people of low income to join the movement for a greener economy.
The green jobs workforce development dollars should be going into our folks coming out of prison, coming back from war, aging out of the foster care system. Because when people see that, they feel it to be something real and middle class. This should be a middle class revolution, not an environmental revolution.
One that creates jobs and might also save the planet. I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The mayor says local governments can also create their own climate initiatives. When President Trump decided to pull out of the Paris Accords, Garcetti co-founded a group called Climate Mayors. So far, hundreds of cities have joined to uphold Paris Agreement goals. Well, they're cute, they're fluffy, and just super lovable. And now here's your perfect opportunity to help take care of one. Rasha Goel has more on what you can do to spread the love with some young kittens.
Do it. You know, sort of like Nike, just do it, you know? Look at these little faces. How could you not want to save these little faces?
Alicia Stevens is a new foster parent who's had the kittens for three weeks, and she says it's been a pure joy.
Look at these little faces. How could you not enjoy this? I mean, they're so precious. And then I think, you know, they're getting socialized and they know how to play, and then somebody's gonna adopt them and they're gonna be all that.
With the city's pet overpopulation and effort to find them permanent housing, LA Animal Services officials are encouraging LA residents to become foster parents and help take care of kittens until they are two months old and ready for adoption.
We train you on how to take care of, for instance, bottle babies. But the main thing that we need to know is that you have the time and you have the heart to do this, to take care of a kitten. It's very rewarding.
Every year, 8,000 to 9,000 kittens are brought into LA Animal Service shelters. Now, if you're wondering why fostering is important, well, fostering a kitten can help save a life, and it's a temporary commitment.
That population's very prolific, and a lot of times it impacts the shelter. You know, our population increases by three times, it triples. And so it's really important to have that foster base that we can rely on so that we don't have to euthanize.
And to help support this effort, LA Animal Services is offering free cat spay and neuter to all LA residents regardless of income levels for the entire month of May.
People don't realize that the intact female that's free roaming is able to produce 100 cats in a year. She can have literally three or more litters at a time.
So open your home and heart and help save a life. LA Animal Services is also in need of donations for these kitten products. These young ones are just looking for some perfect love. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
How could they be any cuter?
For more information, contact LA Animal Services at laspenuter.com. The LAPD welcomes a new batch of newly sworn officers to its ranks. Gil Reyes reports from LAPD graduation day where we're reminded that physical toughness is just part of the job.
Going out to the field, you guys should be just like you are now for the next year, and you won't have any problems.
Instructors giving final advice to a group of cadets before they officially become LAPD officers. It's graduation day.
Vet pep talk being given here at the Elysian Park Academy just moments before the actual ceremony. And all 31 LAPD officers are graduating today, 26 men, five women.
City leaders first thanked the officers' families. The academy can teach a lot of things like defense tactics, weapons handling, and emergency aid. But Chief Charlie Beck acknowledges that the most important thing is something only families can teach.
And that is the ability to do the right thing when no one else is looking, and when it involves somebody that can do nothing for them. To your family and friends, thank you. This is the product of your work and of your life.
Officer Velvet Davis looks forward to getting to know LA's diverse communities.
We don't see a lot of female officers, and we also don't see a lot of officers of color. So that's what I wanted to just personally strive to inspire younger individuals, especially in the inner city where I came from. If they see more of what looks like them, it'll inspire to make a bigger difference.
It's an honor, sir. It's an honor to wear this badge, wear the uniform, and my biggest goal is to make the city of Los Angeles proud.
Congratulations to all the graduates. From Elysian Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Also graduating, two officers who'll go on to serve with the Los Angeles World Airport Police. From planting 3,000 trees across the city to cleaning up the streets, the LA Conservation Corps has been an integral part of the city, not only making it a better place to live, but also by giving at-risk youth a second chance. Rasha Goel has more.
It opened me up to actually be a better version of myself, and not only myself, but to help out others on embracing them, to be inspired and to do something with themselves.
Ervin Centeno is excited about his future as he is recognized for receiving the Russell Cantor Next Steps Fund Award at the LA Conservation Corps' annual luncheon. He was once incarcerated and a former tagger, but the organization has helped transform his life and given him the opportunity to create a new life for himself.
With the help of the Russell Cantor Scholarship, I enrolled at Trade Tech where I found out about the signage industry. Instead of tagging, I was able to make the creativity and artistic talent that I have and channel it into career painting signs.
The LA Conservation Corps, a nonprofit that helps transform youth lives while giving back to the community, has been holding this annual luncheon to celebrate its graduates and recognize those who have made a difference.
Think for a moment about the array of programs that the Corps supports. Conservation, obviously, but there's counseling and supportive services and educational programs, after-school programs, the gamut of services and projects that help lift kids up.
Jabri Byers, who was formerly homeless, was also recognized. The Corps has helped lead her life into a new direction. She's been participating in construction projects with the Corps, but hopes to pursue a career as a medical assistant.
Being in the Corps is more like being around families. So it's like nobody has to keep secrets. They tell you exactly how it is and what you feel like you need to change. So being around them, I felt like I had a lot of realness, and like I got so used to people like telling me everything I was doing was okay, but being there, they were pointing out what I was going wrong. But they were also like, you know, training me and helping me to get better at it.
This luncheon has taken place for over the past 25 years, and according to officials, 85% of the participants either move on to full-time jobs or continue on to schools.
The Conservation Corps teaches us that each one of us is a leader, that the youngest, most left behind person in this city has the same dignity and the same dreams and aspirations and hopes as those of us that have already done well.
For me, the Corps' mission is simple. It's about opportunities and options.
And it truly is an opportunity to recognize there are second chances at life when joining the Corps.
Tomorrow will be better than today, and yesterday was a lesson for today.
In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Park poor LA is opening up a lot more green and open spaces for families and kids to play in in the form of community school parks. Anna Marcos brings us the first of four parks that will open to the public.
Shouldn't everybody have a park within walking distance of where they live?
That's the idea behind this celebration, as school and city leaders ring in the first community school park in the city, this one at Harvard Elementary. School-community parks are designated open areas on a school campus that residents will now be able to use during the weekends.
I think it's a great use of the space because we're always looking for places for our kids to play, somewhere that's safe.
Many of our LA Unified Schools are in urban, very densely populated neighborhoods, like the one here. And a safe place to go and play on weekends has not necessarily been the reality of what we've seen.
I grew up here, and I have my baby here. We're going to remain in this neighborhood, and we know that there is a lack of enough open space.
The school-community parks will mean more Angelenos will have access to green and open spaces and have basketball and volleyball courts to play in.
We have our children drop out of school, and sometimes because we forgot to think about them, after school, on the weekends. And so we know that this isn't just about health. This is about keeping kids in school, and we always say we want schools to be the center of the community. Now, they actually will be.
The Department of Recreation and Parks will have staff on hand to keep an eye out and promote healthy activities.
Having access to playgrounds and basketball courts, it's how our children develop, not just physically, but socially.
It encourages them to have physical activity, you know, and not just stay at home and play iPads and watch TV.
City leaders say the parks are part of an overall sustainability plan. Among the goals, by 2025, 2/3 of residents will have a park within blocks of their home, no matter what part of the city they live in. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The schools with these community parks will open up the play spaces to the public on the weekends from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m., and it's all free. Air quality at the Port of LA has improved dramatically over the past 10 years, but it's not stopping there. Gil Reyes reports on challenges that lie ahead at the nation's busiest port.
The port complex today remains the single largest source of air pollution in Southern California.
Port of Los Angeles Councilman Joe Buscaino lays out the cold, hard facts at the Port of LA's Clean Air Conference, but of course, not all the news is bad.
Over the past decade, we have come a long way as an industry in addressing the challenges and solutions regarding air pollution created by port operations.
The conference, with port representatives from around the world, was about sharing best practices. One launch 10 years ago was the port's Clean Trucks Plan, replacing old, dirty port trucks with cleaner burning ones. Port officials say it's resulted in a 90% drop in diesel emissions. Another plan, agreed to by the ports of LA and Long Beach last year, is to go totally gas-free by the year 2035.
We'll continue to advance green technologies at our port complexes, both here in Los Angeles and in Long Beach. We thank you for your continued commitment to social, economic, and environmental benefits of trade. Our economies definitely must grow.
But must also do so in a green way. At the Port of Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
An estimated 1 in 9 jobs in our region are linked to operations at the ports of LA and Long Beach. Councilman Mitchell Farrell talks to residents about important community issues. The athletic field at Pan Pacific Park gets an upgrade, and your furry best friend will soon have a new place to run off-leash in Eagle Rock. All of these stories in City Beat. Councilman Mitchell Farrell held the first of three community meetings to offer information on issues affecting residents of his district, particularly Glassell Park, Atwater Village, and Elysian Valley. O'Farrell talked about issues impacting his district, including keeping the LA River clean, traffic, and public safety, among other topics.
The homelessness right now, that's probably the biggest concern. It's just, you know, there's so many people that don't have homes, and what can we do about it, and what's being done, and what can I do about it?
It's really an empowerment piece, and time for constituents to get to understand that their local government is here, available, and accessible.
The city of LA's Department of Rec and Parks, along with Councilmember David Rue and the Bureau of Engineering, celebrated improvements to the soccer and baseball athletic fields at Pan Pacific Park near the Grove. Some of the improvements include new energy-efficient field lighting, trash bins, shade structures over bleachers, and storm drains that will offer security and convenience to park guests. The baseball field was regraded to minimize erosion and improve drainage. A smart irrigation system will provide sustainability for the new lawn and the field. The park serves 15,000 residents living within walking distance. And over in Eagle Rock, groundbreaking was held for a new Eagle Rock Dog Park, the first in northeast LA since the last one was built 13 years ago. Originally left out of the city's budget two years ago, Councilmember Jose Weisar fought to ensure the construction of a new Eagle Rock Dog Park was included as part of the city's 2016-2017 budget. Once completed, the 3/4 acre park will create an accessible, sustainable, and natural space that's safe and comfortable for dogs and their owners. The Dog Park will incorporate natural features from the area, such as boulders and fallen tree branches, to create agility opportunities for pets while adding a more enjoyable experience for visitors. The project should be completed by spring of 2019. Have you been to the movies lately? Well, one ticket can set you back around $20, and that doesn't include popcorn. But as Gil Reyes reports, families in Pico Union recently took advantage of free screenings of a film near and dear to their hearts.
Families in Pico Union enjoyed free carnival games, also movie screenings of the Oscar-winning animated film Coco. LA's Coco Carnival was organized by Pico Union's Councilman Gilbert Sadio.
A lot of our families in this neighborhood can't afford to go to the movies. It's very pricey. So the Councilman Sadio has given the gift to the community by showing the movie Coco. We're thankful to Pixar, who allowed us to do this. You like it?
Yeah!
Three screenings were held at the Salvation Army's Red Shield Community Center, a gathering place for the area's mostly Latino families since 1950. These same families have embraced the film for its accurate portrayal of traditional Mexican values, like hard work, sacrifice, and respect for elders, especially in death.
As Councilmembers said, it's our way of changing those negative stereotypes that are coming from Washington DC, from our president, about Latinos, and we're empowering our community to show the beauty, the culture, of what it means to be Latino.
I see your remosos. Where did you get those?
My nina made it.
Your nina made it? Wow. And how about those dresses?
We bought them.
Wow, they're traditional Mexican dresses?
Yeah.
Mexican pride alive and well in Pico Union. I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Councilman Sadio's office and Red Shield also worked with the nonprofit El Centro del Pueblo together. They provided free carnival rides, food, and toys. Well, come out and support our veterans during Memorial Day celebrations. If you missed it last time, don't worry, Beauty and the Beast returns to the stage in Boyle Heights. And get ready for some Friday night fun as a popular wine tasting event kicks into high gear. All this and this week's things to do. With stunning views overlooking the city, Barnesdale Park welcomes Angelenos 21 years and older to sip wine, picnic, and watch the sunset for another not-to-be-missed season of wine tasting at the iconic cultural destination. Marking its 10th season and attracting sellout crowds, the renowned Barnesdale Friday Night Wine Tastings, the foundation's signature fundraising event, returns to the hill. There'll be a number of rotating food trucks on hand, as well as micro pop-ups. It all takes place on the West Lawn from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. from May 25 through August 31. Barnesdale Park is located at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. For more, visit barnesdale.org. Come show your support for our veterans during a Memorial Day celebration hosted by the Office of Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council. All families and veterans are welcome to enjoy the festivities. The event takes place at 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 26, at Veterans Memorial Park in Cypress Park, located at 609 Cypress Avenue. Backed by popular demand, Casa 0101 Theater and TNH Productions present Disney's Beauty and the Beast, the Broadway musical, in association with Councilmember Gil Sadio and El Centro del Pueblo. Performances are Fridays at 8:00 p.m., Saturdays at 2:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., and Sundays at 3:00 p.m. through June 10. Casa 0101 Theater is located at 2102 East First Street in Boyle Heights. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Today is Friday, May 25, and this is the Los Angeles City Council.
Bloomingfield, Bana, Buscaino, Sadio, Anglendre, Harris, Dawson, Weisar, Caress, Cricorin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rue moves, and Ms. Rodriguez seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves, and Mr. Bloomingfield seconds.
Madam President, there is a request to continue item 14 to next Tuesday, May 29.
Without objection, that would be the order. What's next?
For item 12, the budget resolution has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration. Additionally, for item 3, the name of the bar should read Broadwater Plunge Bar and not Backwater.
Okay, next?
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing.
Do we have any cards on that?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay, what's next? What's the next item?
Items 2 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report has been posted, submitted, and circulated for item 8.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, what's next?
And Madam President, there is a request to send item 2 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that would be the order.
Items 9 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us, members. Are there any cards on any of those items?
There are cards on all items.
Thank you. Members, any specials for any of you? So what's next?
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our presentations. Mr. Bloomingfield, are you ready?
Let's get the boys and girls soccer teams up here.
And it's always something that you can go to, to be safe and to learn. And then, of course, lastly, we'd like to thank the council and, of course, Mr. Blumenfeld, for recognizing us and bringing all of us here, because we really appreciate that Los Angeles sees what hard work all of us are putting into this. Thank you.
Great. And you guys are developing great neck muscles because you have all these heavy awards on you. It's pretty incredible. So again, give it up for El Camino Real, Charter High School, the academic decathlon team.
Let's hear it one more time for El Camino on your terrific score. Congratulations. Mr. Blumenfeld, any more winners? That's it? You're done? Okay. Uh, Mr. Sadio, are you ready for your presentation?
Hi, good morning. I'm Margo O'Connes. I'm the lead for Safe Routes to School.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much. How are you today?
I'm having a nice weekend.
Sir, you might want to have the posters turn, face the, um, the council so that cameras can pick it up.
I have to read it.
There you go. Freddie, why don't you turn that around?
I got it too. It's just one. There it is.
Mrs. Sadio, good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Um, let me say that those who are great champions that, uh, Mr. Blumenfeld brought to our attention this morning, we're here with, uh, a younger group of future champions and we want to make sure that they do become all that they can be. And so we're here to talk about the Walk Wise L.A. Pedestrian Safety Pledge. Um, you know, Safe Routes to School is a supporting strategy of the Vision Zero, which is our strategy, in making changes to create a safer Los Angeles for children who are walking and biking to school. And it's a partnership that we have with the city and the various districts, L.A. USD where you once served, the Los Angeles Police Department, and the, uh, Los Angeles School Police. And it's part of a, part of this fundamental team that we've brought together. What we do is we create this pledge of awareness, and it's, uh, important for traffic safety education, and it has a series of catchy phrases like, "Be alert, look and listen," "Be visible day and night," and "Drive safely." Uh, and this is for the parents. Our fundamental strategy is to have, uh, traffic safety education to serve as the core component of safe routes to safe schools, uh, as our strategy. And students are encouraged to have their parents drive safely and drive with the DriveWise pledge, where parents pledge to be good drivers. We all know that children are responsible for influencing their parents, and they're the reason that they buckle up, and they're the reason that they reduce their smoking, they're the reason that they change their behaviors and practices because they love their children, as we all do. And so students pledge also to be good pedestrians, and that pledge requires them to, I want them to participate in this when I say it, look left, everybody look left, to look right, look right, and then to look left again, uh, before they cross the crosswalk. This is the beginning of a safe route to school, and it's, uh, very important. We see this daily as we all hurry to work in the morning, as children head to school. We want to make sure that they have the best practices and they start those practices, uh, as young children looking forward to the future. And the good news is, with these strategies, there's been a 27% decrease in fatal traffic collisions, decreasing from 63 in 2016 down to 45. We are committed to reaching the goals of Vision Zero, and this is part of that critical strategy. This campaign comes to us from Central Traffic Division's, uh, Traffic Safety Educational Platform, and they highlight the Walk Wise L.A. Pedestrian Safety Program. It's a program that includes 4th and 5th graders, and as I said, and as you saw, they are being trained on how to cross the streets, uh, safely. Officers from the department discuss leadership, uh, and peer pressure as part of the curriculum, and the Central Division has visited 43 schools out of a commitment of 140 schools, and they've made this pledge to 7,400 children. So we're very happy to be here, uh, with them today. The champion of this cause, the hero for all parents, the person who has made, uh, this his goal, is Captain Alfonso Lopez, and we want to hear from him, because he has been so key and critical in making this part of our new reality in the 1st District. Have you done? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, City Council Members. On behalf of Chief Charlie Beck, who was present today to greet all our students as they arrived off the buses, First Assistant Chief Michael Moore, and Deputy Chief Robert Arcos, both who are in chambers today, I would like to thank you and acknowledge Councilman Gil Sadio for providing Central Traffic the opportunity to present the Walk Wise Los Angeles Pedestrian Pledge campaign today. As you are aware, on August 24, 2015, Honorable Mayor Eric Garcetti entered the Vision Zero Initiative, bringing light to, bringing, excuse me, bringing to light every death as a result of traffic collisions is preventable. At that time, statistical data documented the city of Los Angeles as the second in the nation for the number of people who were killed by motor vehicles who were walking. Since 2009, pedestrian fatalities accounted for more than half of the fatal traffic collisions within this city. This concerning fact, the unacceptable and unnecessary death of our children, a five-year study from 2012 to 2017 documented 32 fatalities of children walking to school. In review, in reviewing a variety of highway safety plans from across the United States, I discovered the Walk Wise Hawaii Pedestrian Pledge, a simple concept based on language that was very dear to heart, language that was embedded to us as individuals at a young age, but has been missed with the current generation of use. Believing that utilizing this as the foundation, we developed a safety educational platform to give to our children at the elementary schools. This platform was endorsed by Streets Are For Everyone, a Vision Zero Initiative, and Safe Routes to School, and Margo O'Connes and Vision Zero. Central Traffic Division developed a 25-minute presentation where we go into the elementary schools, we talk about traffic safety, we have the children take a pledge with us, and then we send the children home to school with homework to take the pledge with their adults, their, their parents. When you look at traffic deaths entirely, the average age is 58 years of age. So we are empowering our children to be the conduit between the Police Department, Vision Zero, Department of Transportation, to the parents, to help reduce fatalities entirely. As a result, we have visited a variety of schools, charter, public, private, Catholic, throughout Operation Central Bureau, to educate and bring awareness. As we come to the end of the 27, 2018 school year, we acknowledge that the long journey before us to accomplish our goal of reaching every elementary school within OCB, 140 schools entirely, um, has missed us. With the endorsement of Councilman Sadio, we promise that we will hit all 140 schools next year. In addition to that, I personally build, have built a strong relationship with Safe Routes to School, my fellow peer traffic captains, and we are going to bring the pledge throughout the city of Los Angeles, throughout the department, the Los Angeles Police Department, to all city schools, hopefully, next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margo.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio, for recognizing the importance of street safety today. My name is Margo O'Connes, and I am the Safe Routes to School Coordinator at L.A. DOT. Safe Routes to School, as we've heard, is a core strategy of Vision Zero with the goal to eliminate all traffic deaths across the city. Recognizing that traffic crashes are the leading cause of death for our youth ages 5 to 14, we at DOT are delivering on our promise to keep all students safe on their way to school by bringing street safety improvements into school neighborhoods and safety education into the school communities. We are now constructing over $18 million worth of infrastructure, infrastructure improvements at nine of our schools of most need, and completing safety plans for the remaining top 50 schools, uh, including 10 that are in Council District 1. Safe Routes to School is thrilled to be partnering with Councilmember Sadio and the Central Traffic Division of Los Angeles Police Department, to bring together this wonderful audience of students here and outside, and our esteemed council members to share in a traffic safety promise. We promise to travel safely when walking and biking to school, and perhaps most importantly, remind those that drive, including our students' parents, to put away the phones, to look out, and be respectful for those that are walking and biking, and to check their speed to help save a life. Thank you, and together we can be the street safety heroes.
Thank you. Ready?
Okay, everybody, we're going to do the pledge. Councilmembers, I'd like you to join us in this pledge.
Absolutely. You can go ahead and lead us.
It's a commitment to Vision Zero. It's a commitment to safe streets. Everybody raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Mr. Marquise Harris-Dalson?
Councilmembers, we want safe streets in the 13th and the 14th, wherever, everybody. Okay.
Mr. Buscagno, you ready?
Thank you. We're counting on you, Mr. Buscagno. I pledge, as a good pedestrian, to always look left, to always look right, and to always look left again, and continue crossing the street. All right, you're all safe now.
Great. Mr. Rue, I didn't see you take the pledge. You have to do it again. Mr. Corretts is on the cue. Mr. Sadio?
We got, the 9th District, it was going to be a little challenge there. Yes, Mr. Corretts, please.
Well, I want to thank you for doing this, because I was taught something like this as a kid their age, to be a very careful pedestrian, and I'm actually alive because of it. I have been an incredibly defensive pedestrian ever since. And one of the things they taught me additionally is when you cross on the green light, that you should still watch the oncoming cars and make sure they're slowing down for you. And a few years ago, I was crossing Sunset Boulevard in front of the Roxy Theater, the mid, a few seconds into a red light, I, I did exactly that which most people don't do. I stopped and waited to see the car slow down, and instead it sped up and went through the red light going 40 miles an hour. And if I crossed the way most people do, I would be dead. Um, so that's an extra thing to encourage kids to do. Don't cross a green light reading your cellphone, but actually keep an eye on the traffic to make sure you don't get run over, because that was a lesson I learned, and that's why I'm here today.
And we're all better for that.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts.
Take these. We're going to go in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Thank you, boys and girls. You guys were so well behaved. Give yourself the big round of applause. Very, very nice. Okay, members, we're going to move on to multiple card items. Shaun, are you here? Come on up. Good morning, Shaun.
Yeah, hold on, let him.
I'm going to remind you the items that you, uh, that you filled out cards for. So it's general public comment. You filled out cards for items 1A through 1H, items 9 through 13, item 15, 16, and 17, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, and 24, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes. Item 1, uh, item 1 I am against. Item 13, I'm maybe 4. Uh, item, all the other items, uh, I'm against. My general public comment.
Can we please quiet down the council chambers? I know our kids are exiting, but Shaun has the floor right now. They're doing their best, Shaun.
You're my fans.
Yes, I know. Okay. Go ahead, Shaun.
Uh, yeah. As you know, 38 days from Sunday, new pastors come to St. Charles Barmaio. Monsignor Gagarin is not going to get well. He's very sick with cancer. So we're getting a new pastor in 38 days. Get used to the new name. Father Jose Magaña, that's the new pastor's name in, on the 1st of July. My friends, my friend is sending an email to the city, I hope he sent emails to the city councils. I hope I see one of you there. That's July 1st at 10:00 a.m.
Have a good weekend, Shaun. Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, I'm just going to remind you of your items that you filled out a card for. It's general public kind, general, general public comment. Item number 1B, 1E, 1F, 1G. Item 12, 15, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 24. Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Martinez. If you could turn the microphone on. Thank you. I, I just wanted to, um, thank, uh, staff, but also the council leadership for inviting the L.A. Superior Court judges over for a little hootenanny up on the top of the tower. This is a great area, because you got a lot of lawsuits from people because of your malfeasance, and by schmoozing with the judges, I think it, it sets the right tone that, let's kind of keep back any kind of decisions that would favor transparency and open government. So, so well done. And I like the retroactive component, because there's no way to question it, and it's done. And what lunatic would criticize a judge, including me? I'm not criticizing the judges. I love the judge. Let me, Mr. Kerkory knows, I adore the judges, and one judge I particularly adore is Strobel, Mary H. Strobel, who's an outstanding judge, uh, for the record. And, uh, I'm not sure if there's a conflict with England or Strobel. If somebody could get back to me on that, I would appreciate it. Um, now, regarding the, uh, item number 19, this is where, uh, all of us are united in LGBTQ Month celebration. I certainly am a big supporter of celebrating. I can't remember which month it is, because this is kind of, they didn't mention it in the item. And I have a question, just on behalf of the Democrats, I know you're one of them, and I am too, but I got a little endorsement from some Republicans, I think, because they enjoy the way I criticize the local party, uh, leadership, which is you guys. And the question is, the rainbow donkey, uh, that was smeared around the internet this morning, uh, sends a signal that LGBTQ individuals are all of one party, and turns what I believe is something that should be completely open and free to behave as you like, regardless of your affiliation, uh, into a partisan issue. So I would ask you and O'Farrell and all the great leaders who have been outspoken, uh, you know, on behalf of fair treatment, to make it clear that that's not what's meant by putting one party. I mean, we could certainly have a, an elephant as well. I'm not an elephant nor a donkey. And let's just segue into Mr., um, item number 15, which is the cosmetic testing item on animals. Thank you, Fabel. I know that you've been a leader on this. And it's very hard, uh, to put lipstick on a pig, which segues into the budget item. The budget resolution item, certainly Mr. Kerkory has done an outstanding job of shortening down to the shortest possible time, the budget meeting and hearing. He's congratulated himself and staff, including Mr. Hale, has done a really good job, I have to admit, uh, on reducing opportunities for the public systematically and effectively, including, you know, we've got all these city departments, can't hear from the budget advocates, whose sole purpose is to sit at the very table in front of me, and finally did when everybody was exhausted by the budget and it would make no difference. So that's a little bit, um, I don't know, a little awkward. Um, regarding, uh, item number 14, here you have a, a very important issue, and I know Buscagno cares a lot about the truckers down there, but somebody's bringing forward an idea, which is that if the truckers, uh, are mistreated in any way, the retailers for whom the truck companies are delivering the stuff are going to be liable. So that sounds like a series of lawsuits. I don't know. I mean, you know, that would be like if we blamed you for somebody in the city who's doing a bad job, uh, and isn't the city.
Mr. Previn, you have a one-minute general public comment?
Okay. I'm going to try to, uh, to make it brief. Um, we got a lot of needs for affordable housing, and, you know, uh, what they call the full-service affordable housing, where you have permanent supportive housing. And I think people are ready for some decision-making on that, and, you know, we've got a lot of treasured partners. Today, we've got Foundation for Affiliated Housing. Now, this is two people, Tom and Deborah Willard, who have 22 such facilities up north, and 43 in Southern California, and one in Texas. And it raises the question, by feeding that same old mill, those folks, I think, are doing really well. They live down in Laguna Beach in a fancy place, but is there a way to actually put the money out the door as opposed to, you know, I have nothing against the people who are taking the time to put these properties and projects together, but I, I don't know. I'm, I'm looking for some kind of a red tape cutter that does not involve going to the same parties. I know Herb Wesson was honored by ACOF, who are a great group, working with MTA. Everybody's working with everybody, but nothing's getting built. So we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you're speaking on general public comment, item 1A and 1B, and item 9 through 13, items 15 through 18, I should say 19, then you've got items 20, 21, 22, through 24. Go ahead.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Uh, as far as these items are concerned, you have to dig for gold among these items. Uh, I'm, I'm not worried about, uh, proposed liens. I know, uh, some people here feel that liens are, that thousands and thousands of people are losing their homes from liens because of, uh, liens. That's bullshit. Whenever anybody comes up here and, uh, protests a lien, they get rid of it. Uh, I'm telling you right now that, uh, city council, city council, we never know when you're going to meet. You know, you cancel for Ramadan. I hope none of you ate. Mr., Mr. O'Farrell, did you eat during Ramadan?
Madam President, we're...
Mr. Walsh, need to stay on the items you filled out.
Okay, well, we know that, uh, you took, you took off for Ramadan, but you didn't take off for Passover. That's because you have secret Muslims on this board.
And again, we're not on...
Uh, street lighting, uh, street lighting, as I said, you do a good job on, on street lighting. Uh, number 15, and that is, uh, the city's position, sale of cosmetics tested on animals? No, we don't want any cosmetics tested on animals, unless the animal has been elected to the city council. Uh, then it's okay to test the, tested on animals. Uh, as far as 18 and 19 is concerned, uh, this is, uh, Heritage Month, uh, okay. 19, funding for, with data collection and stakeholder regarding Runyon Canyon. Runyon Canyon is, uh, is horrible. It's in terrible, terrible condition. And, uh, the tourists come here and, and, and violate it, and you do nothing. You do nothing, because the mayor, of course, is running for president, and he doesn't want to, uh, offend anybody. Uh, number 21, this is, uh, Making Movies That Matter Youth Film Festival? Forget about it. Fencing Security Department, you have terrible fencing, another $54,000 on fencing. Uh, okay, let's get to, uh, my minute of general public comment.
Can you put, put a minute up, or his general public comment?
Out of, out of nowhere, you canceled the meeting because of Ramadan. We understand that Herb Wesson is secretly a black Muslim. That's fine. What doesn't he admit it? What doesn't he admit it? Harris Dawson, secretly a black Muslim. You didn't take any time off for, uh, when it came to Jewish holidays. Did you take a second off of Passover? That's because you're vile anti-Semites, with the exception of Mr. Corretts, who is a self-hater. I'm telling you right now that you have absolutely no reason to take off Ramadan. And I understand that next year, next year, they're taking off Yasser Arafat's birthday. They're not going to tell you all of a sudden, they're not going to, I'm telling you, the mayor is running for president. He's out in New Hampshire, and all of you are on your knees with kneepads servicing the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. You better have, be checked for AIDS.
Next speaker is Patricia McAllister.
I go to sleep at night thinking about this council.
Hold on for just a second, Mr. McAllister.
Okay, here's the deal. Number 12...
Hold on, let me remind you the items you actually filled out cards for. General public comment, item number 1A through 1H, and then items 22 and 23 in your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, um, items 1, A, B, C, et cetera, this is about the liens. So I'd like, as I always say, reduce that penalty fee from 250% to, say, 50%, because we want to help the people stay in their housing. We don't want to put more people on the street. I know it'll be profitable for you guys, but we have to drive around and look at these people, okay, and take pictures, and put them on the web, and let people know around the world what's going on at the city council here. So that's what we, we have to do. So, um, let's go to 22. You, here again, you're talking about taking a building and, and converting it to some housing. Here, it's, uh, number 22, you want the L.A. DWP Water and Power, a parking lot. Uh, and you want to, um, use that to, in Council District 12, to build some housing for the homeless. I don't believe anything you say here, because you haven't built the HHH properties yet. Okay, that's, that's 1.2 billion. That's why those Koreans were here this week, very angry. We're not stupid. I'm a former teacher, and I have a lot of skills I don't even talk about, but I am very disappointed in this, this council here, this city, this mayor. Do not vote for Garcetti. Don't even vote for him to be a dog catcher. And don't vote for Viragosa. He's the one who helped screw up this city. He was in whorehouses and everything else when he was mayor. One of the movie stars, he walked in a whorehouse, there was Viragosa.
That's not an item on the agenda, ma'am.
Okay? Don't vote for any of them. Now, we want you to vote, be independent.
So I, I think maybe we should go into general public comment.
Do you want to go to your general public comments, so you can go?
General public, I'm going to number 23. We understand that Herb Wesson is secretly a black Muslim. That's fine. What isn't he admitted? What isn't he admitted? Harris Dawson, secretly a black Muslim. You didn't take any time off for, uh, when it came to Jewish holidays. Did you take a second off of Passover? That's because you're vile anti-Semites, with the exception of Mr. Coretz, who is a self-hater. I'm telling you right now that you have absolutely no reason to take off Ramadan. And I understand that next year, next year, they're taking off Yasser Arafat's birthday. They're not going to tell you all of a sudden, they're not going to... I'm telling you, the mayor is running for president. He's out in New Hampshire. And all of you are on your knees with knee pads servicing the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. You better have, be checked for AIDS.
I go to sleep at night thinking about this council.
Hold on for just a second, Mr. McAllister.
Okay, here's the deal. Number 20...
Hold on, let me remind you the items you actually filled out cards for. General public comment, item number 1A through 1H, and then items 22 and 23 in your general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, um, items 1, A, B, C, et cetera, this is about the liens. So I'd like, as I always say, reduce that penalty fee from 250% to say 50%, because we want to help the people stay in their housing. We don't want to put more people on the street. I know it'll be profitable for you guys, but we have to drive around and look at these people, okay? And take pictures and put them on the web and let people know around the world what's going on at the city council here. So that's what we, we have to do. So, um, let's go to 22. Here again, you're talking about taking a building and, and converting it to some housing. Here, it's number 22, you want the LEDW P Water and Power, a parking lot. And you want to use that to, in council district 12, to build some housing for the homeless. I don't believe anything you say here because you haven't built the HHH properties yet, okay? That's, that's 1.2 billion. That's why those Koreans were here this week, very angry. We're not stupid. I'm a former teacher and I have a lot of skills I don't even talk about, but I am very disappointed in this, this council here, this city, this mayor. Do not vote for Garcetti. Don't even vote for him to be a dog catcher. And don't vote for Vera Gosa. He's the one who helped screw up this city. He was in whorehouses and everything else when he was mayor. One of the movie stars, he walked in a whorehouse with Vera Gosa.
That's not an item on the agenda, ma'am.
Okay? Don't vote for any of them. Now, we want you to vote, be independent.
So I think maybe we should go into general public comment.
Do you want to go to your general public comment so you can go?
General public, I'm going to number 23.
Okay, thank you.
Number 23, that is, um, you want to give, right here, Harris Dawson, $25 million to build some housing at, um, it's called the Hope on High Park Development, type 2B housing. Type 2B housing means that it's not fire resistant, okay? I did all the research. Not fire resistant, of course, you wouldn't want that anyway. You got homeless in there. You don't care about them, of course. And it's being built with pre-purposed shipping containers. Now, not 25 million, he just put the, the motion in last week and he's trying to get approval today. We can't even get any HHH housing in this business since 2016. How did he get a one-week approval and, and come in here for a vote today? He hasn't built anything that's on 8730 to 8738 and 8742 to 8752 South Vermont. I drove down there, the businesses are still there, nothing's being done. Now, this is what I've been getting a lot of complaints about. You guys have these HHH projects, just like his, that's 62 units. You're charging $91,000 per unit. The hard construction costs, you charging $369,000 per unit. Soft cost, 103,000, 123,000 per unit, for a total of 36.3 million. We have people coming to these committee meetings. We want you to tune in, people. They say they can do these projects for half of this.
Go ahead. You have your one-minute of general public comment?
I want to talk some more about this. The acquisition cost, $91,000 per unit. Now, we're talking about apartments when I say per unit. These people in here have hired their buddies. They're giving this money to them, and I know they're getting some under the cover. 62 units at $91,000 a unit? Are you out of your mind for a total of 36.3 million? That's just his. All of you in these, this council district got the same thing going on with this HHH money. I've talked to people all the time on the web. They're talking about, how could they have charged in this? One man came up to the committee meeting two weeks ago. He said, I could, we have a construction company. We can do this for half the price. They almost threw him out the meeting. You guys are, I'm telling you, a wrath is going to come down here because people laying on the street, they're dying, over 800 are dying a year on the street, this homeless. You playing with people's money? And you tell your city attorneys, you're 800. I'm coming after them.
Next speaker is Dan. Dan, you're speaking on your general public comment and then items 15 and 17.
Uh, and 14, I signed up for 14.
14, there was already...
It's, it's available.
Continued. It was continued.
Look at your own agenda.
I understand that, but I'm letting you know now, item 14 was continued.
City Attorney, 14 I came here for, it is, it was, it said, comment is open. Your, your agenda said it, City Attorney. Your agenda said...
But we have continued the item and taking no action on it today. You could, you're perfectly free to talk about item 14 in your general public comment if you want to.
Unbelievable. All right, council members, that's just how the city of Los Angeles gives the middle finger to business, and I will be commenting on that. Item number 15, this is a great idea, Mr. Coretz, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Blumenfield. I would love to write a very favorable article about this. This is something that's near and dear to my hearts. However, if you don't respond to article inquiries I send you about controversial issues, I'm not going to write a favorable article about something that is absolutely fantastic. Mr. Coretz, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Blumenfield, if you care to submit information about this, I would like to write a very favorable article, but not when you ignore controversial questions about subjects that I ask you. Item number 17, council members, you're, you're, you're retroactively approving use of the city facilities for a cocktail party for judges. Do you think that could come up as a conflict of interest anytime a city of Los Angeles lawsuit comes in front of one of those judges? Why in the world would you subject yourselves, or the city of Los Angeles and the taxpayers, to being bogged down by a few hundred dollars of a cocktail party you're allowing to have judges who will probably rule on cases, um, involving the city of Los Angeles? This is penny wise, pound foolish, and the fact that you did it retroactively is only going to come back to bite the city. I will sacrifice my time back to, um, Ms. Martinez, and I'll go to my one minute.
Go ahead.
Um, council members, item number 14 is giving the middle finger to business. You're going to hold amazon.com accountable for problems that trucking companies have with their employees? Guess what? That is going to be the dagger in the heart of any chance L.A. has of ever landing this, uh, Amazon as HQ2. Switching to the Koreatown protests of Mr. Wesson, if anybody from Koreatown, the Korea Times, is watching, hold a recall of Mr. Wesson. He desperately sees himself as the next mayor of Los Angeles, and nothing will harm his chances to be mayor than a recall in his own district, whether or not it's successful. If you are against this Wilshire Boulevard homeless encampment in Koreatown, start a recall effort. It will harm the thing that matters to Wesson most professionally, his aspiration to be mayor. Hold him accountable. Thank you.
Next speaker is Wayne Spindler. Wayne Spindler in the room? You filled out cards for items 12 and 18 in general public comment.
Yes, but there were other items signed up as, as fuck you Herb and Janice Hahn, AKA fuck you. So he signed up on multiple...
Hold his hand for just a second. Can you clarify that, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you.
So, Mr. Spindler, you're perfectly free under the Brown Act to use a pseudonym, but if you put in a series of pseudonyms on multiple cards, you're disrupting the meeting because we don't know how to book them together for multiple comment. So I assume, based upon what I've seen, that you've signed up for almost everything. We'll take your cards this time. But the next time, if you use a series of pseudonyms, you're not going to be able to speak on all of them, okay?
Poor asshole. You can't stop me. I'm a puppet. That's right. So, again, item 1, we say fuck the city. And for the record, we signed up as Fabian, AKA cunt hates these liens because she hates fucking liens. Janice Hahn hates these liens on number 1. She thinks they stink. And that's the reason why we may sign up on these items with pseudonyms individually if we choose to, because those pseudonyms are a right to anonymity, you dumb fucking asshole.
Okay, and now we're not on an agenda item. Please move on to the agenda items.
Yes, because I'm on item 1, you, you balding fuck. So item 1G, fuck you. Item 1H, fuck you. Going back to item 1E, Janice Hahn says, no, fuck you. Item D, Fabian Wesson says to the bigamist, current price, fuck you, no lien in the 9th district. CD6, well, I'm saying... Go ahead. Nuri. Nuri. Stealing from the constituents, no, on number fucking 1B. Get rid of anti's liens. Oh, I couldn't have said it better. All right, now, let's get back to this shit. Now, we get to the one item that we all love to talk about, animal protection. And thank you to a man who's really a pig. And that would be Paul Pepper Pig Coretz, protecting his fellow animals from cosmetic injury. Whenever they put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. Don't put lipstick on a pig. Just ask. Yes, you know where I could go with this. But today's Friday, so I'll leave it B for now. Now, we have also other items. You're going to try to fuck Amazon. Amazon says, fuck you. No, we're not going to pay for trucking costs. We're going to put shit on trucks from China.
Okay, I think that was the item that we continued, Mr. Spindler, so move on.
Agenda showing it's on the board available for public comment, knucklehead.
You can talk about item 14 on general public comment. Do you want to move on to your general public comment now?
Okay. You're, you're making the cunt mad. Okay, okay. So getting back to SB 1249, we would prohibit the sale of cosmetics to, to animals? No! We need to sell cosmetics to animals because when you got a big fat cunt, you have to put lipstick on her to not make her look like a pig. Well, that's well done. So, let's get back to the public comments. Yes, the recall against Herb Wesson very well could happen, and what we need are professional signature gathers. See, the city charter is derived in a way that makes it nearly impossible to recall these scumbags, AKA council members. So, right now, I'm contacting professional signature gathers. I want to know how much it costs per signature, how many signatures we need. Why? Because Herb Wesson is building a homeless encampment in the middle of my beautiful Koreatown on Wilshire Boulevard, next to the Wells Fargo branch and the beautiful place that was just built. He's going to take this area and destroy it for all of our Korean friends that have spent decades gentrifying and perfecting this wonderful area. Get rid of that parking lot, Herb, or recall, fuck you.
Next speaker is Patricia Richardson. Is there someone here? Patricia Richardson? No, there's, you're Patricia McAllister. No one here by Patricia Richardson. Uh, how about Maria? Is there somebody here by the name of Maria? Okay. Ms. Richardson, are you here?
I'd like to ask if it's reasonable to make sure in this June 5th election, coming election, to make sure that there are no holographs running for governor, nor if they're not holographs, they will not use holographs in any of their proceedings as governor. And also, outside the city of Los Angeles, to make sure there are no mayors, mayor candidates or any city officials who are holographs or who are non-human in those offices. I'd like to know if that's reasonable to request that.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And that concludes, uh, cards for all items, including general public comment. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to item number 1.
And Madam President, for item number 1, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that item 1A be confirmed and the lien amount be reduced to $2,222.30. That the liens 1B, C, D, E, and H be confirmed, that 1F be received and filed as the property has been determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and finally, that 1G be received and filed as the lien has been paid in full.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance on item number 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's move on and vote on items 9 through 13. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes. And Madam President?
Fourth with Mr. Kerkorian on item number 12. Madam Clerk? Do you have an announcement?
Yes, we're going to...
Very well, let's go ahead and vote on items 15 to 24. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and recess our regular meeting and begin our special meeting. Can you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonham, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Coretz, Kerkorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rui, Wesson, 13 members in a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, what's the first item?
Item 25 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, members, any specials? Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes. And Madam President, there is a request to send this item forthwith.
Okay, without objection. Go ahead and adjourn our special meeting and return to our regular meeting. And what's before us, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Can we please rise for adjourned motions? Are there any adjourned motions to my right? Seeing none. Are there any adjourned motions on my left? Seeing have a great Memorial Day weekend, everyone. Be safe, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.